Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Clerk will read the roll of the members.
Counselor Zabat?
Present.
Counselor Garcia. Counselor Taylor?
Here.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Robinson?
Yeah.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Vido?
Present.
Counselor Vega Maldonado. Counselor Rodriguez?
Here.
Counselor Avellaneda?
Here.
And Counselor Lopez?
Here.
Three, five, seven, eight, nine members present, two absent.
Okay, we're moving on to memorials and celebratory resolutions.
The first resolution introduced by Counselor Vega Maldonado.
Go ahead.
Whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, September fifteenth to October fifteenth, the Chelsea City Council would like to recognize the following Latinx trailblazers for their continuous amazing work in the Chelsea community. And whereas Juan Gallego be recognized for work through Rotary International, not only has he provided 1,000 of face masks and volunteered during the coronavirus pandemic, he has also raised thousands for a project to provide water in the indigenous areas in Colombia. Whereas Pastor Edgar, for his work at St. Luke's Church, every Saturday, he provides a food pantry but also a community soup kitchen. He expanded his service during COVID-19, which helped decrease the food deficit within the city. Whereas Damali Vidal, for running as a state representative and being an inspiration to others to do the same, not only as a Chelsea resident and a Latina. And whereas Fidel Maltese and the Department of Public Works, many of the workers identify as Latinx, they have been frontlines, workers throughout the pandemic, and are actively supporting the community with their regular duties alongside with Fidel Maltese, who has been a great leader and created a strong team. Whereas Maria Bellin Power, for her role in the neighborhood outreach group within the pandemic response team. Maria also translated the Weekly Address updates from the city manager to our residents during the height of the pandemic. Now therefore, bear resolved that the Chelsea City Council honor these trailblazers for being a part of the community, whether they may be or not, maybe by providing a service, being community activists, being frontline heroes, et cetera. These individuals, organizations, and businesses have become an example of how Hispanic Latinx have positively influenced and enriched our community, state, and nation.
Counselor Robinson, what is the wish of the board?
Adopt this shenanigans beyond the suspension if there are no objections.
At this time, I'll recognize Counselor Taylor.
I just want to say just a few brief words about Juan Gallego. I met Juan Gallego when I joined the Chelsea Rotary Club. And when I had, was in my first year or so, he had gone on a trip to the Philippines to help Rotary International fix small children's cleft palates. He came back and he showed all the slides of all the before and after. And he assisted all the doctors in sterilizing all the equipment over and over again. And after that slide presentation, I went up to him and I said, Juan, you're my idol. And let me tell you something, even though I'm now president of Chelsea Rotary, you're still my idol. And had, had, I was very proud to nominate you for all the work that you did through this pandemic. The, the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of masks that you had made in the beginning, the face shields that you had made for the city workers, for all your work with the Chelsea Collaborative and feeding people, and also for your work internationally with helping the indigenous YU people of Colombia to actually be able to survive because you're digging wells. We are, Rotary is digging wells for these people so that they have water. So.
We're gonna do it all together.
Okay. So anyway, thank you so much for being an inspiration, not only to me, but to everyone else.
At this time, I will now recognize Counselor Brown.
Hey, Mr. President. I wanted to say congratulations to all the honorees for your service and your dedication, my good friend Juan, Father Edgar, for your prayers and your commitment to the people and well-being here in the church, and the other honorees. But I really wanted to say, you know, your work and your dedication to the residents of Chelsea really plays a vital part in our community. It's almost like everyone coming from different backgrounds to do their part to make Chelsea a better place. We have government officials here, names as mentioned here tonight, a colleague on the city council for her hard work and tireless efforts to trying to always go out and improve on how she can better Chelsea. But most importantly, again, I remember Juan when we first came up together and stuff, and his commitment and getting him involved, and when he got involved, he never stopped. And I, you know, what comes to me every time I get a solicited letter from a donation for this little thing, I think about Juan, it's the smiley faces where he was always working to improve other people and make sure that they were able to get their teeth fixed and their face fixed. And his dedication has beyond Chelsea, went beyond Chelsea. And as it speak here in this resolution, in this highlighted piece, that he has not forgot where he's come from. And he goes back to his homeland, and he brings water, and he helps support waters and screens here. So we're really, we're really fortunate to have, you know, Father Regga, Fidel, Juan, Damali, and the other honorees here tonight. And we want to really thank you guys for your dedication, and you ladies for your dedication. Thank you.
Counselor Rodriguez?
So I had the honor and I selected Pastor Edgar as my Latino trailblazer. I don't think he really needs introduction. Pastor Edgar is someone that's very well-known in the community, well, very involved, always lending a helping hand. You know, you need a space, talk to Father Edgar. You need some food, talk to Father Edgar. You need some clothes, anything you need, he's someone that's always out there, putting his, his church pretty much for anybody. It's a home, it's a second home for many people, especially during this pandemic. You go down Washington Street on a Saturday, you, you could tell something good is happening. Very well organized, you see a line three blocks down the street, and you go see who's in the beginning of the line, it's Father Edgar welcoming everybody, leading the charge. So I selected you, and I just want to say thank you. Thank you. You're someone who don't need a picture to display the hard work you're doing. You're someone that just does it, does it because you know it's right and you know it's needed. So again, just thank you for your, your involvement with the city of Chelsea.
Counselor Recupero?
This is for Damali Vidal, the first Latina woman to run for Steve Rep in this district, and for all the good things she has done since she's been a counselor. From a hard-working, young girl from the city of Chelsea, to become what she is, it's a great achievement, not only to her character, but to our great city, that within this city you can produce people. It's not just, you don't have to come from a great, great environment to be a great human being. Human beings are great no matter where they come from. And for this, I give her this award with very well deserved.
Counselor Lopez?
It's my honor to nominate Fidel Maltese, the Commissioner of DBW, City of Chelsea. And just to follow up on the resolution, I would like to publicly acknowledge the Latinx worker of DBW and the leader Fidel Maltese, who have been amazing through the pandemic and always, they even changed their schedule, their schedule hours to, to support our city. Also, I want to say Juan Gallego, I know Juan Gallego since 1989, he, when I got married, he rented me my first apartment. So I know Juan for a long time, and he's been a great leader also in the city, helps a lot of people. And I actually always keep in touch, talking about business, and he grants apartments to people who needs it, and thank you for that. Fidel, thank you very much for all what you do. Father Edgar, before the pandemic, I was a volunteer at the chap, the church over there. Every Saturday I was there. Since the pandemic started, I haven't been able to because I've been working every Saturday, but hopefully I'll be back, and thank you for all what you do for the people of Chelsea. And I know you welcome everybody to come to your church, and thank you guys. You're amazing people.
Counselor Vido?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I, I, I had the honor of nominating Maria Beleng, but before I nominated Maria Beleng, I checked in with our secretary, and I said, I want to make sure that we're acknowledging Juan Gallego and Father Edgar. And I was so pleased to hear that other colleagues had already mentioned them and had lifted them for their hard work and steadfast commitment to everyone in the community. I know Juan Gallego was passing out meals once everyone thought the pandemic was still over, Juan Gallego was still passing out meals, he'll call me periodically, and he really has like this deep care for the community. So I just wanted to make sure that I was cosigning that. But Maria Beleng Power, she works over at Green, at Green Roots, and Green Roots was essential in the Chelsea pandemic response team coming to fruition. Caroline from Green Roots had, had brought it to Mimi Grani's attention, people organized. And I hate, you know, sometimes I feel a little uncomfortable when we acknowledge and we single people out because there are so many people that contributed, and, and that there's no way that anybody could have done this work by themselves. But there's a special place for someone who is the mother of two small children, is homeschooling children, is working as an executive director of a nonprofit, is working with the city manager to translate every, every Monday night. Maria Beleng was part of the neighborhood response team that had to do with the Chelsea pandemic. So within the Chelsea pandemic response team, and we coordinated a neighborhood throughout the city. I am so honored to call her a friend. I'm so honored that she's one of my favorite constituents, the way that she's involved in this community, the way that she shows up and puts her, her family, because we all know that she's married to Fidel, that the way that they show up here as leaders, and, and really just lead these efforts in our community and doing it from a place of compassion and care. And so I just wanted to make sure that we were acknowledging her, and if there's anybody that we did not mention, this is all inclusive, it's for everyone. I just wanted to make sure that I was acknowledging Maria. Thank you so much.
Any other counselors want to speak? Seeing none, we'll just appreciate all the hard work here. Well, we're gonna take a break so that, a ten-minute recess, so that we can individually give the awardees their certificate and also allow for a picture to be taken. I'd like to call up first Juan Gallego and please, Todd Taylor. Father Edgar, can you please step up? Thank you.
Jesus, what about you, Paul? If you want to be here, what would you do?
Fidel, DBW Director Fidel Maltese, please. And while you're at it, you can give her, you can pass it on. Moving on to the next celebratory resolution introduced by Counselor Recupero in regards to, of recognizing October as Italian Heritage Month. Whereas October is the month that many Italian heritage celebrate with so many others, Columbus Day parades, and whereas Italian heritage is ritually entwined in the history of our country, this heritage did not begin and end with the well-known voyages of Christopher Columbus, but continues to the present day in fields of exploration, science, the arts, literature, as well as business and development. And whereas Italians, as those of Italian descent, have made remarkable contributions to our nation, the list is quite long. American history, history is replete with citizens of Italian lineage, including the signing of the Declaration of Independence and formation of the U.S. Constitution. Italian-Americans have fought in every war, from the Revolutionary War to recent conflicts, and have served with distinction, including several Congressional Medal of Honor recipients. Italian-Americans were instrumental in building, developing many of our major cities. Italian immigrants built the bridges and the roads that we use today. Several major U.S. universities have been founded and directed by Italian-Americans, and valuable discoveries in science and medicine are credited to those of Italian heritage as well. And whereas Paul Casino is to be honored as part of the Italian Heritage Month, his loyal service is acting mayor, alderman, school committee member, and clerk to the city council for 50 years. He is to be recognized for his continuous work and service. Now there be it resolved that we, the members of Chelsea City Council, declare October as Italian Heritage Month in the year 2020. Counselor Recupero?
It's a great thing that Italian Heritage Month.
What is the motion? Motion? What is the motion? Do you have a motion?
Yes. Make a motion to adopt.
Adopt under suspension?
Suspension if there's no objections.
Yes. You may.
I would ask that any references to Columbus be removed from this resolution.
There is a motion to remove any reference in the resolution to Christopher Columbus. That's a roll call vote.
Shall it's amended?
To an amendment. Zabat? Remove, we'll ask for a roll call.
Okay. Yes to remove?
Yes to remove any reference to Christopher Columbus in the resolution for Italian Heritage Month.
Counselor Zabat?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia? Counselor Taylor?
She's, she's here.
Oh, okay.
That's a yes.
Counselor Taylor?
No.
Counselor Recupero?
No.
Counselor Robinson?
No.
Counselor Brown?
No.
Counselor Vido?
No.
Counselor Maldonado, Vega Maldonado? She's not here, no, absent. Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Roy Avellaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five in favor, one, two, three, four, five opposed. The remembrance is defeated.
So passes as?
Under suspension.
Under suspension. You may speak on it.
Like I was saying before, this is Italian Heritage Month. I don't know why, what it is. It's the same as Latin Heritage Month. It falls in the same month. And all of a sudden, I don't understand why there's different types of Latins or why everything's against Italians. Italians suffered more than anybody else and never complained. They worked very hard, and I'm, I can attest to that because my father was an immigrant, and he came from a different place. They couldn't speak the language and they never cried. They couldn't do anything but never fell behind and always worked for their family and thought of their family. So by trying to oppose that this for an Italian Heritage Month, that's a bad thing. It really is bad because you're slapping the Latins in the face, not only the Italians, all the rest of them, because it's part of Latins. All the Latins came from the Romans. So we are all Latins, Italians, Spanish, and Portuguese. This is the Latin race. So when anything happens, it's all of us that are combined. And I don't know why this, all of a sudden, you can't acknowledge Italian Heritage Month. You can acknowledge everything but except Italian Heritage Month. What did Italians ever do to Americans? The only thing they ever did to Americans was make our country great. That's what they did. They worked very hard, raised their family, and in return, then asked for nothing. They just gave. And as far as the next thing, I'd like to present this to Mr. Paul Casino.
Hold on.
He earned it for 50 years. Here's an example of a great human being. He was my boss, and he was the greatest boss I ever had. He was a compassionate person. You know, in life, we only have one thing, our compassion and our humanity. Once we lose that and try to go pin one race against the other, it's the worst thing we can do. Because in return, what you're, you're saying is, well, I'm not gonna like you because that's what you are. Then you're gonna create an immensity among races. Instead of embracing it, you're creating it, and it's a bad thing. Can I suspend the rules and give this to Mr. Casino?
We'll see if there's any other speakers. Any other speakers? No, that's not public, not yet. Counselor Daniel Lopez?
I would like to congratulate Mr. Paul Casino. Paul Casino is the nicest person I ever met. He's always here working. He's a dedicated man, and he's well-respected by a lot of people in the community, especially for me. I respect you a lot. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Any counselors speaking?
Yes, can I speak?
Counselor Vido?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this resolution is celebrating Italian heritage. And while I am in favor of taking down Columbus statues because I believe, I don't believe that he is the end-all-be-all when it comes to Italian heritage, and I don't appreciate what he represents, at the same time, I don't feel that it is incumbent upon me to tell the Italian heritage who they decide to glorify for their leader. Frankly, I think they could do better, but I don't feel like it's my place. So I, I kind of voted on that on the fly. I don't really know, I didn't have a time to think about it, I didn't even think it was controversial. I just didn't want to kill the moment in celebrating Italian heritage because for some reason, this gentleman is very important to Italian culture. But I just wanted to make sure that I clarified that. I also want to make sure that I lift my favorite city clerk, Paul Casino, for all of his hard work in the city. This is honestly, I've heard so many stories that he shared with me from when he was on the school committee, when he served as mayor for six months, when he was an alderman, when he worked at the post office. And it's really interesting to get these stories from someone firsthand, from such a wholesome and, and like pacifist standpoint. He is honestly a true leader and someone that is often overlooked. He cared for his brother who just passed away a couple of months ago. He is a great man in the, in the chambers, outside the chambers overall, and I'm honored to know him and to be able to work with him, so this is much deserved. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
I know Paul doesn't actually like to get these type of accolades, but Paul has been my friend for a number of years here in his community. I served with Paul on the, as alderman. I have the highest respect for Paul. And as a young man being a alderman, I was always able to go to Paul and seek out certain advice on different issues. And I appreciate the fact that he was always above board and honest in his communications with me. And for that, Paul, I always respect you, and thank you for all your years of service.
Counselor Taylor?
So I'd also like to give my appreciation to Paul Casino. As a, as a new counselor, Paul was very kind to me and, and kind of, we had a nice talk when I first came in, and, and he gave me lots of encouragement, which I took to heart, and I appreciated it. And I tell you, all these years of service to the city of Chelsea, it's unbelievable. And I echo what all my colleagues have said tonight about that. And thank you so much. I just want to address one other thing, please, about Columbus. People are free in this free country to have their own opinions about whatever it is that they want. They're entitled to your own opinions. Being a trained historian, I studied Columbus when I was in my PhD training, and I'm familiar with the scholarship. And let me just say to some of my colleagues and other people who are in favor of taking down the statue, you should be, become familiar with the academic scholarship regarding Christopher Columbus. Because he is a figure that has been politicized over the years and become a target of a certain faction of historians and subsequently so political people. So I would just encourage anybody who wants to find out more about Columbus, feel free to contact me, and I'll give you a reading list.
Counselor Brown?
President, again, I just want to say congratulations to all clerk, Paul Casino, for the work he's done, the tireless work he's done. He, believe it or not, and most of the public don't know, he makes all of us city council, whether past or future or present, look good because we come up and we depend on him and his assistant to help us get all, all the stuff that we talk about, debate and discuss, and to make sure we get the right tone and the wrong tone, he gives us the insight. So I want to thank you, Paul, for first and foremost, dealing with all these personalities throughout the years, through this year, and also since I've been here. You've always been a gentleman, you've always been fair, you showed integrity, you never took sides with anyone that I know of, and I thank you for your professionalism. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Seeing none, at this time, Counselor Recupero, if you'd like to present the award. Counselor Brown, I mean, Paul Casino, we'll have a picture taken.
I'd just like to thank everybody for the kind words and expressions of appreciation. And I know the question on everyone's mind is, how old is that guy? But anyway, you're as young as you feel. And I feel young because everybody makes me feel a part of the governing body, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Moving on, we have a celebratory resolution introduced by Counselor Garcia and Counselor Avellaneda. Whereas on October 30th, 2020, the city of Chelsea will officially celebrate Arbor Day. And as part of this special day, the Massachusetts Tree Wardens and Foresters Association will come to the city of Chelsea to plant a public shade tree. Whereas children, parents, community leaders... Whereas children, parents, community leaders, public officials and municipal employees are invited to participate in the planting event. And whereas this event helps to ensure that the city maintains its status as a Tree City USA. And whereas this year, the city of Chelsea has officially been recognized as a Tree City USA for its 16th year by the National Arbor Day Foundation. And whereas, being a Tree City USA gives Chelsea the benefits of having more state resources to further enhance the quantity and quality of trees in Chelsea. And whereas, the Tree City USA award is given by the National Arbor Day Foundation in cooperation with the National Association of State Foresters and the USDA Forest Service to recognize environmental improvement and encourage higher levels of tree care throughout America. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea, the Chelsea City Council would like to recognize the efforts of the Department of Public Works and the community for their work towards improving Chelsea's environment via an enhanced tree program for securing the Chelsea City USA status for the 16th year in a row and for having a successful 2020 Arbor Day event. What is the wish of the council? Counselor Garcia.
I make a motion to adopt unanimously under suspension. If there are no objections, and I wish to speak on it.
Seeing no objections, the chair recognizes Counselor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. So today, as you all know, it's a big day of celebration for the city of Chelsea. And it is an honor to recognize Arbor Day in our city, but also recognize our hard workers, the Department of Public Works. We know that have been working nonstop, even during this pandemic, before the pandemic, and now after. They still remember and, and are, and are true to, to their commitment of making our city a green city and, and keeping it that way. So, um, I commend all of you. I congratulate all of you. I know I couldn't be there today in person, but I'm sure that our council president or one of my colleagues will be able to personally hand this recognition to all of you. Thank you so much for keeping our city green and keeping our city safe, um, for our future generations. Thank you.
Any other speakers? I would just like to thank that, again, since we have, um, our DBW Commissioner Fidel Maltaz here in the audience, to thank you for your efforts and all, and, and the, of your staff who, uh, go out there and make sure our, our city is tree, is green. And that, uh, we continue to be part of this wonderful program. Next resolution.
Next resolution introduced by Counselor Garcia and all members of the city council. Whereas DVAM Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for the residents to learn more about preventing domestic violence and acknowledge the efforts of our local nonprofit center that provides confidential support, advocacy and education for people affected by domestic violence. And whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects millions of Americans each year. And whereas children who grow up in violent homes are abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism and non-productivity. And whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this crime. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council hereby acknowledges the tireless efforts of Harbor Cove and its representatives to the Chelsea community in educating, advocating and ensuring the safety of all victims of violence. Be it further resolved in the light of the DVAM Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Chelsea City Council as representatives of the city are fully committed to leading alongside the efforts of our Harbor Cove to eradicate violence on women and all gender-based violence in our community.
What is the wish of the council?
I make a motion to adopt unanimously under suspension. If there are no objections, and I wish to speak on it briefly.
Seeing no objection, the chair recognizes Counselor Garcia.
So personally, I'd like to take a moment, um, as mentioned in the resolution, to recognize the hard work of Harbor Cove, which is a special organization in Chelsea that's been able to help many survivors with domestic violence. Um, but also I want to take a moment to also, um, remind everyone that during this pandemic, the numbers of, of victims of domestic violence have definitely increased. So, um, if you know of someone that needs help, make sure to offer a helping hand and to connect them to wonderful organizations in our communities that, that can really help with, um, with tackling this, this cycle.
Counsel Taylor.
I'd just also like to echo the comments of my colleague about Harbor Cove. And I'm well aware of the, uh, good work that they do. Chelsea Rotary Club has been, uh, a partner of Harbor Cove for some time and we, we like to, uh, make sure that they get a proper amount of funding every year. And, uh, I can't say enough, uh, about the work that they do, especially during this pandemic because the numbers have gone up and it is a serious problem. That they do, uh, a great job in addressing. So thank you, Harbor Cove.
Counsel Robinson.
Be brief back to this approach here that they weren't able to do the Taste of Chelsea. But I just wanted to be able to echo that you still can donate to Harbor Cove. So dig in your pocket and send them a little donation.
Counsel Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I want to thank the ma- uh, maker, uh, maker of this, um, resolution for recognizing that this is again, um, something that we cannot forget because we're dealing with the pandemic because the pandemic is bringing more pressure and bringing a lot of stress on families. And this is the month that we should really, um, remind ourselves that this is where we, um, rededicate ourself to fight this evil that goes on and sometime behind closed doors and things that we're not aware of. Um, we are so fortunate to have Harbor Cove and our midst here for the work that they do, not only here in the city of Chelsea, but the surrounding communities. So, um, you know, let us rededicate ourself. Let us realize that not only women, but men too are being, um, victimized by this, um, domestic violence. And despite what we're going through, we have to be able to realize that someone needs help. And we have to be that help that when that person, and if we feel or if we have an idea to help that person get the script, to say, I need help. Um, these, um, domestic violence, um, situations, they occur and they trap people. And folks feel like they don't have a place to go, so they'll stay there. And when they stay there, it usually gets worse and we don't want that to happen. So again, thank you all for your kind words towards this. Thank you for the, um, car- um, Counselor Garcia for just reminding us, this is a time of month that we should rededicate ourself and be mindful. Under all this pandemic, somebody is going through something and we should be some help to those folks and seek them. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Seeing none, that motion passes.
The next resolution introduced by Counsel Robinson and all members of the city council. Whereas in 2020, an estimated 266,120 new cases of invasive breast cancer are expected to be diagnosed in women in the United States. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month educates women about the importance of early detection for breast cancer. And whereas, as we observe National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we pause to remember all those who are fighting this disease. Including families of friends, advocates, researchers and healthcare providers, as well as those we have lost to breast cancer. And whereas the National Institutes of Health, Department of Defense and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention will invest over $1 billion in research this year to fight this dreaded disease. And whereas screening and early detection are essential to our nation's fight against breast cancer. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, ignore, acknowledge the importance of raising awareness of breast cancer in our community as we work to support survivors. Those currently battling breast cancer and those who might detect it in early stages. And that we recognize October 2018 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Chelsea. That's 2020.
What is the wish to council?
I adopt this unanimously. I'll be, I'll be brief. I just want to really, you know, talk about the numbers again, 266,120. I think cancer has affected all of us in, in one way or another, family members, friends, associates. And I would just encourage the women in our community, the mothers, the daughters, the sisters, to do early detention, which is very essential in fighting breast cancer. And I would just encourage them to do the screening. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Chair Counselor, uh, Counselor, uh, excuse me.
Vito.
Counsel Vito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I'll be brief. I just, I wanted to say something on the last resolution with, with respect to domestic violence, but I figured I'd save it here. This pandemic has been tough and I miss my mom because we're not able to see each other. My mother fled New York fleeing a domestic violence situation to come here and create a better life. For me, when I was two years old with nothing but the clothes on our back. My mother is also a breast cancer survivor and I have seen how breast cancer just went through her body and almost took her from me. So I just want to make sure that men and women get, um, get checked because the numbers for breast cancer in men are also super high. And I just want to make sure that folks echoing with Counselor Robinson, that they go out and they get checked and make sure that they, that, that they get checked to catch early detection if there are any signs. So often it's something small. You should do periodic breast checks to make sure that you don't have any, anything that shouldn't be there. And even if it's something small, make sure and get it checked. Um, and I just wanted to make sure to say that. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Counsel Brown.
Again, um, thank you. Again, this is the words of the resolution. Um, obviously, um, breast cancer, any type of cancer affects our family members and, you know, a lot of time, even when we know folks that have been through it or going through cancer, we, you know, we say prayers for them, we say well wishes, but you know, this time of month, this month here on this awareness, if you know someone with breast, breast cancer or going through breast cancer, I encourage you to send them a card, send them a note. Let them know that someone is thinking about them because it helps them. A lot of time we think because they come out of the hospital, they had the surgery, everything is okay. But we still need to keep them in prayer. We need to encourage them through letters and cards. So if we know anyone, please, just especially this month here, it's a good time to send a card or a note to let them know that you're thinking about them and they're not alone, not alone in this fight. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Seeing none, we'll move on.
We're going on to public speaking.
At this time, if there's any member of the community here that would like to address the city council, please make your way up to the podium and state your name and address. You have four minutes.
Uh, hopefully everybody can see or hear me or at least hear me. Uh, Alexander Floyd Rogers, 260 Clark Avenue, apartment 807 in Chelsea. I'd also like to thank everybody that's been helping, especially during the Chelsea Pandemic Response Team. And, uh, I got a couple of calls and emails and Facebook, uh, messages about either not being able to contact anyone or, um, somehow they weren't able to reach people. We have a, uh, we have Facebook, we have Twitter pages, we have, um, Chelsea Disability Commission email. Spell it out that way with all the, the C, the D and the C for the commission capitalized at gmail dot com. So hopefully, if anybody does need help, they contact their family, friends, churches. We have a lot of organizations, which we already talked about, and other ones that we haven't mentioned. If anybody needs, uh, help in that way, just let, try to find a way to contact us, I guess. So, what else can I say? So that was the, that was the main point. Um, we did get some messages that people didn't know about the Chelsea Eats Program. Because I guess not everybody's able to subscribe to the cable, uh, Chelsea TV channel. So, I think that's about it.
Up there.
Chelsea 140 Broadway. Um, I'm actually a resident of Everett, though I grew up in Chelsea. I miss it. I wanted to speak today about, I believe, a letter that will be read, um, later on that was sent last week. Um, it was signed by over 16 business owners here in the city. So I wanted to take a few minutes to put it into context of why it came to be and the purpose of this letter. And I want to start by thanking, um, you know, the city council for really putting this, um, up to discussion. I think it was a topic on a committee that, um, was told to us by various members of the community that would have a say in reviewing, in the reviewing of applications for the emergency fund. Applications that were submitted by many business owners earlier, um, in the month. And our biggest concern with this was simply that as business owners, we didn't feel that it was in the best interest of businesses or the city council for there to be any council member in that committee. We simply thought that, as you know, your, your duty to pass great legislation and to, um, create budgets and to assign funds to help businesses, to help the city, to run government. But at the end of the day, um, your role is not one of administrators in this sense. Of deciding who gets the funds and who doesn't, or really even if not deciding, having a say in the evaluations of these applications. So I want to make that clear, that it was a letter with that in mind and at the very core of it, the purpose of it was to let you know how business owners felt, our fears, our concerns, um, our expectations. And also just ensuring that you knew that we were, at the same time, very thankful for the creation of this emergency fund. And we think it's a great, um, opportunity to benefit businesses that are struggling a lot, that we've been hit hard by the pandemic. And at the end of the day, we all just want clarity and transparency and access to information, right? I think one of the biggest problems with this was that there was a lot of confusion and a lot of, a little bit of a lack of transparency of, one, the existence of that committee, two, who was going to be in that committee? Three, the role of the committee, um, in unison with other organizations and the city government. So I think that hopefully moving forward, business owners, we want to know what's going on and we want to know what states, what steps are being taken. We want clarity and we want transparency. So at the end of the day, it was a call for that. For more transparency, more clarity, and hopefully in next steps, there won't be any confusion or any misunderstandings. So I'm, I'm personally very grateful for, um, all you city councilors and the job that you do. Thank you for getting to work and passing this emergency fund and thank you for bringing clarity to how it was going to be managed moving forward. We're looking forward to seeing the results of that. And most importantly, we're looking forward to seeing how it will have a positive impact in these businesses. And as we move forward to next year. So thank you for your time and thank you for your attention on this.
Anyone else? Seeing none. We're now moving on to the public hearing for the proposed provision. We're now moving on to the public hearing for the proposed provision on zoning amendment Washington Avenue from an R2 to a BR2. If there's anyone who'd like to speak regarding the upcoming zoning vote to reach change the Washington area between Heard Street and Blossom, to please step up. That will be changing several parcels from an R2 residential 2 to a business district 2. Seeing none, that portion of the hearing is now closed. Now, we have the approval of the minutes. Do I see a motion? Counselor Lopez. There's no objections. We have an accept and file. Communication from the city manager.
We have the first communication from the city manager requesting approval for increase in school department FY21 budget. Dear councilors, as you may recall, the FY21 budget approved by the city council in June included a school department budget of $96,513,407. That budget assumed that, given the financial impacts of COVID-19, Commonwealth would likely level fund Chapter 70. Surprisingly, in August, the Commonwealth notified municipalities that although FY21 unrestricted general government aid would be level funded, FY21 Chapter 70 money would actually be increased to accommodate for inflation and enrollments. As a result, Chelsea's Chapter 78 for FY21 will be $85,769,782, an increase of more than $4 million over FY20. As a result of this Chapter 70 increase, the school department has revised its budget with adjustments for charter school tuitions and reimbursements. The new FY21 school department budget is $100,310,436, an increase of $3,3797,029. See attached December 29, 2020, a letter from Superintendent Almi Albeida. Because of all this increase to the school department budget is fully funded by additional Chapter 78 to the city. There is no adverse impact on the amicable side of the city's budget. For this reason, I respectfully ask that the city council approve the full $100,310,436 revised budget approved by the school committee on October 1, 2020.
What is the wish of the council?
Coming up on the new business.
Okay. We have a communication from the city manager in regards to North Suffolk Office of Resiliency and Sustainability. Dear councilors, I am writing with the request that the city council approve a new regional susta- sustainability, the, the, office that will focus on climate resiliency and energy efficiency. This new shared office to be housed within Chelsea City Hall will provide services to Chelsea, Revere and Winthrop. The initial goal for this office is to employ two individuals, a sustainability manager and a resilience manager. The office may grow in the future as funding allows. A draft of the work plan for the first year of the office is attached. The cities of Revere, Chelsea and Winthrop have been in a discussion for some time about creating a shared climate office in order to maximize efficiencies in this area. Presently, all three of these coastal communities expend resources on climate resiliency efforts, but each municipality is constrained by limited personnel. In each municipality, employees of this community's respective planning and economic development offices focus on this critical environmental effort, but only when existing employees can spare time and resources from other priorities like housing, zoning and open space. The purpose of the new shared regional office is to pool resources and create an entity and new employees focused exclusively on climate resiliency, energy reduction and the alignment between those two efforts. In the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic and the economic dislocation it has caused, this may seem like an odd moment to be, be pursuing new services with new expenses. But one obvious lesson learned from this pandemic is that poor environmental conditions have exacerbated the spread of this disease in communities such as Chelsea. So investment in this area is warranted. Further, this regional approach to climate resiliency has attracted the intention of at least one philanthropic entity, the Barr Foundation. Barr is willing to provide full funding of this office for calendar year one and substantial funding for calendar, calendar year two, 80%, and calendar year three, 55%. So it will not be until fiscal year 2023, when communities will be required to make more than a token investment, and not until fiscal year 2025, when full municipal funding would be necessary. The proposed three-year budget plan with Barr Foundation support is also attached for your review in both the fiscal year and calendar year version. The fiscal year breakdown identifies each municipality's expected fiscal year contribution. Assuming the Barr commitment is finalized by the end of this calendar year, the three communities hope to launch the new regional office in the spring. Accordingly, each community must seek, in the fiscal year, local legislative approval of the required intermunicipal memorandum of the agreement pursuant to MGL Chapter 40, Section 4A. I am advocating that we take such action to make the city's commitment to the project clear to the Barr Foundation in advance of the final board decision on funding. As you can see from the attached agreement, the proposal is for, for this office to be housed in Chelsea City Hall. There is sufficient space for this office in our housing and community development area. Housing the office in Chelsea will ensure that Chelsea has adequate oversight of the work. Given the critical need for climate resiliency efforts in Chelsea, particularly at Island and River, on Marginal Street, along the Chelsea Creek and at Mill Creek, I feel this shared regional office model gives us the best opportunity for maximizing resources. It will also help ensure necessary coordination between the surrounding coastal communities as we address the critical future climate change challenge. For all these reasons, I respectfully request your approval of the attached intermunicipal agreement for the creation of the North Suffolk Resilience and Sustainability Office. A proposed order is also attached. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and follow the communication under suspension. Will be some coming up on the new business?
We have a letter for communication from the city manager, Tom Ambrosino. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to the recent city council order requesting a list of proposed assessed values for FY21. As has been the case in the past, the city will make available to general public a list of proposed assessed values for FY2021. As soon as the Massachusetts Department of Revenue provides preliminary approval of such values, we cannot release any values prior to such approval. Typically, such DOR approval occurs in late October. Once DOR grants preliminary approval, the city will publish the interim assessed values. Shortly thereafter, roughly early November, I will schedule with the city council my annual presentation on assessed values and the anticipated FY21 tax rate. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and follow the communication under suspension.
So moved. Communication from the city manager. Downtown Broadway sidewalks. Dear councilors, in response to the recent city council order requesting that new sidewalks planned for downtown Broadway include some brick elements, the city will ensure that some brick accent is included in the reimagining Broadway design work. Unfortunately, the, the start of the comprehensive sidewalk replacement is still several years away. In the meantime, we will continue to do periodic patchwork to the existing sidewalks where bricks have deteriorated. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and follow the communication under suspension. There are no objections.
Communication from the city manager regarding request project deficit on Essex Street work. Dear councilors, I am writing to request that the city council approve two financial transfers and an appropriation from reserves in order to cover the final deficit on the comprehensive Essex Street utility and road improvement projects. At the end of the day, the project has a deficit of $508,139.20. As you recall, the Essex Street project was a significant utility and road construction project that has encompassed not just Essex Street, but a portion of Highland as well. The projected project costs were approximately $4.3 million. However, during the course of construction, actual costs rose to over $4.8 million. There were basically two reasons why we have this cost overrun. First, while our contractors were mobilized and out in the field, we expanded the scope of the street and sidewalk work to encompass some nearby areas that were in very poor condition, including Ellsworth Street and portions of Shawman and Hawthorne. With the crew mobilized, there was a cost efficient means for performing this work and improving the neighborhood. Second, we encountered some unforeseen utility conditions that warranted immediate repairs, including numerous old water gate valves and undocumented and antiquated brick sewer lines. Again, adding to the scope of the existing contract with crews mobilized was the most cost efficient means for addressing these conditions. We do have funds to cover this deficit. A total of $208,758.60 will be covered from the excess funds remaining from the Webster Avenue Utility Project, which is now fully complete. The balance of the funds, a total of $299,380.60, will require a transfer from the General Stabilization Fund. Draft orders are attached. Because this overall project was extremely beneficial to this neighborhood, we feel these costs are justified and ask that the council approve the requested financial transaction. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and follow the communication under suspension. Will be some coming up on the new business?
Okay.
Communications and petitions to the council. We have a communication from the last meeting that wasn't accepted with regards to Small Business Needs Assistance Program. It has a petition attached, but no signature.
So we're going to read it. As part of the small business community, dear city council, as part of the small business community in Chelsea, we are grateful to the Chelsea City Government and city council for establishing, establishing the Small Business Needs Assistance Program to support and help stabilize our businesses, which have unfortunately suffered greatly from the COVID-19 pandemic. At the time of the debate and the approval of the assistance, we were excited because it explicitly mentioned in the proposal and PowerPoints that this would be a completely transparent and fair program where every business would be considered equally in accordance to the guidelines set. It has been a great disappointment and concern to find out that in an unannounced agreement and without having the full transparent vote of the city council itself, a committee was created that calls into question the ethics and credibility of the process. Our biggest concern with this committee is highlighted by its very conception. It was done improperly and puts at the center of the process questions of how political council positions with interests and business connections around the city can be deemed proper impartial judge to review applications and decides how funds ought to be distributed. We ask that you, as an entity, please consider the problematic and dangerous nature of allowing a committee not everyone in the city council knew about to have power to administer a program you all voted on. As the city council members, your job is to govern and legislate and not to interfere with the daily operations and executions of the legislation you pass. This, the creation of this committee is in direct violation of that purpose. As a city council members, you do not exist solely in this capacity. You have connections, interests and business and experiences with other businesses that puts into question the ability to put, to be an impartial judge in this progress. We ask how we can be confident of a fair judgment and review of our applications when there is a clear conflict of interest present at the very start. Our biggest concern with this committee is highlighted by its conception. It was done improperly by not having a full transparent vote and calls into question the credibility as an impartial judge and administrator of this program. We thank council member Judith Garcia for her commitment to full transparency and ethics as she displayed in her public recusal from participating in this committee. We are grateful that she understands this important concern. We ask that you consider the initial plan of allowing impartial third party to administer the program. The Chelsea Charitable Business Foundation has the experience, methodology and the ability to administer this program. It was proven by the administration of the Mass Development Fund earlier in the COVID-19 pandemic. We ask that you please reconsider this decision and place the committee for this nature to exist under your watch. We ask that you please respect the spirit of transparency you have offered when you first approved this great program. We're demanding that this committee be disintegrated and that anyone reviewing and making final decisions on our applications be free of an elected position. We are demanding that this committee, I'm sorry, this will repeat, as a business, we are demanding absolute transparency and for you to minimize any conflict of interest and potential for unethical behavior on, happen on your watch. We ask that you honor the transparency in the process that you promised when you voted in favor of this emergency fund. Thank you for your time. What is wish of the council?
Accept and follow the communication under suspension. There are no objections.
Seeing none.
Ken, and Mr. President, is it okay to ask a question to the chair, to the city manager with respect to the letter? I just want some guarantee for the business owners that this committee is actually not in existence.
As far as I know, at this point, the selection of the recipients of the small business loan grants will be made by a combination solely of the Chelsea Chamber Foundation and representatives of our Housing and Community Development Office. There are no councilors involved in that selection process.
You say as far as you know. I mean, aren't you, aren't you the administrator? Wouldn't, wouldn't you know?
Yes, that's my knowledge. That it will be exclusively done by members of the Chelsea Business Foundation and representatives from our Housing and Community Development Office. They will be making the determination.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Oh, we have two letters here.
Chair recognizes Counsel Robinson.
We have two letters here. I was kind of confused on both letters, but to my knowledge, the city council was not making any decisions as to who was going to be getting any monies. There was a committee that was appointed to work to help look at how they were going to set up the scoring for those businesses, but at no point, to my knowledge, that the city council was going to be making any of those decisions. It was going to be the Chamber Foundation along with the Community Development Office. So that's why I was a little confused. But, you know, as a right and Rule Six, you know, as the president of council, you can create any kind of committee that you want. I know in the beginning, there was a three-person committee that was kind of in sync with community development, working on what type of system should be in place to recognize the businesses here in the community. But at no point did I understand that the city council, this body, was going to be making any of those decisions on, in regards to the businesses. That was going to be left up to the foundation and community development.
I have a question. I, I wasn't even, when were we made aware of this? Because I didn't even know there was a committee at all.
Chair recognizes Counsel Abir Janata.
Thank you. Back when we were under special session, emergency sessions, there was a creation of a committee for the small business loan program. Counsel Brown had advocated that in addition to our help that we do for the food pantry and for rental assistance, that we do something for small businesses. We then created that committee. That created, that committee had five people. Myself, Counsel Taylor, Counsel Brown, Counsel Judith Garcia and Counsel Robinson. We were the ones who were adult, and that order was adopted, I believe, like 10 to one, I think there was one absent, but it was by, adopted by the city council to create that committee. That committee, if you recall, we came back and recommended, we had a meeting with members from the Chelsea Foundation, with the Chelsea Restoration and the city manager. That committee then continued its work and when the vote came on the floor... And when the vote came on the floor, initially, we had a vote on a $1.150 million. And I advocated, at the time, to siphon an allotment from $250,000 for the administration of that fund to just $150,000 and funnel an additional $100,000 to small businesses. So originally, there was going to be 25% of the allotment from general funds to be used for admin. I suggested to you and my colleagues that we cut it to the industry norm of 10% and that whoever responded to the RFP would have to work with that. It passed. Upon that passage, we worked with Alex Train from the Planning Department, asked to create us, the president of the council, to create a working group so that they could work out on the RFP for this, that was going to be instituted. It was normal. We've done this before. Their council has made comments on an RFP. I point to the Salvation Army building. We all had input on that. And that's what happened on the RFP for who was going to be selected. The two people that I had selected to be on that working group was Judith Garcia and Naomi Zabid. I had asked originally Calvin Brown, but he had a busy schedule and he asked, he couldn't make it. So I then went to Naomi and named her to take his place. Naomi and Judith worked with Alex Train. I chimed in once in a while on the phone conversations just to keep tabs of what was going on and the process in place. Judith Garcia actually was very useful and helpful in attaining someone from Harvard University in their business school to help us with how the way, or rather, the rating system was going to be used for the third-party rating system. I wish I had a copy of it right now, but basically, it's a yes/no questionnaire. There's no, you know, are you owned by a woman? Are you owned by a minority? Yes. Are you downtown? Yes. Are you not downtown? Are you a franchise? No. Are you an independent? Yes. Are you an icon business? Very straightforward questions that would be used to weight the evaluations. At that point, it was released and Chelsea Foundation went off. Now, it is my understanding that there was a misunderstanding from Alex Train that the working group was going to continue to be a part of the process and evaluate it. At that point, both Judith Garcia and Naomi Zabid said, "Wait a minute, that's not what we thought." And I had a conversation with Alex and emphasized that that was not the role of the City Council that we had envisioned. We were oversight only, just to review and monitor how it was going on and to make sure that these applications were sent out and enough businesses knew about it. Literally, we had councilors posting these applications on our social pages. I saw Judith Garcia print out applications and hand-delivered them. It was key that we tried to get as much spread, even though that was the role of the Chelsea Foundation who was selected. But again, our, you know, our colleagues here wanted to make sure it was widespread. In this line, we saw that we had a receipt of a letter, which is quite disturbing because the letter presented here tonight is disingenuous because that was not the letter that was passed around in downtown Broadway. I have a copy of the letter and I have presented it to my colleagues because they are here tonight. The letter that was distributed and gone to store to store was different than the one that's here. And in it, it was accusational personally that somehow, city councilors were not going to act correctly. You know, and let me just say this, councilors, at some point, we all have to defend each other. Every time a conflict of interest, a potential conflict of interest has come upon this body, I've seen councillor after councillor get up and walk out of the room. There has never been a time that I've seen that a councillor stays in this room when there's a conflict. To the credit of our city solicitor and to our city clerk, our, rather, our city council clerk, they actually point out sometimes, "Hey, you got to step out of the room." But we basically, we know when we have to step out. So the idea that somehow, throughout all this, many of us don't know when there's going to be a potential conflict and we wouldn't walk out on our own, you know, doesn't give us much credit when credit is due. Many times, I've seen my colleagues do this and practice it correctly and act correctly. Just a few days ago, Uber, the Chelsea Eats program got launched and it made headline news. And already, I saw in public social media comments, some people complaining that they didn't get chosen or unfortunately didn't know about the program, despite the best efforts of this community, Alex and so forth. I saw comments, "Oh, the city councilors' friends and families got the cards." You know what, folks? We deserve better than that. I know that that's not the case. We know that that's not the case. But when this sort of information or this sort of accusations come across us, we got to fight loudly and say, "That's bull. That's wrong and that isn't the case." And we got to fight it because it's a black eye not only to the people on this council, but also to those city workers. It does not happen. We're on the up and up. So personally, when I see a separate letter with my name on it saying that somehow, I'm going around trying to make sure that I would get the money, let me just say for the record, I did not even apply for this. I can't. There's many cases, as a city councillor, I cannot involve myself in any business with the city. And I've always stepped away. So I didn't even apply. And if I was anywhere near this, I would step away. I've recused myself plenty of times. I've done it in the past. I will continue to do it. I will never, never bring shame to my colleagues, my city, my own family. Never. I wouldn't want to do that. We had a horrible past. That's the reason I got into this business, got up here, because I grew up in a city with that sort of corruption and there's no way I would participate in it. So again, you know, I think we're doing a great job. The committee continues to exist. Why? Because we still have to review the work of the Chelsea Foundation and Alex Train and downstairs and planning. We want to see that, okay, now that you've done the applications, who got them and how it's being done? This is a one-year program. It doesn't end now. So that committee is going to continue to monitor it. And guess what? Even if you're not on the committee, you can still check in. Call Alex anytime you want and find out what's going on. And they'll tell you. So again, I wasn't going to allow this letter because it was a false letter that was presented to us, the one that you presented. And I had three different store owners come up to me and call me and show me the picture and what was being said is a different letter than was presented here. I have a copy of it and I've shown it all to you here. So I think that we got to defend ourselves at times and say, "Look, we're all watching each other's back." Thank you.
No, you can't address us.
I'm sorry?
Counselor Vidal.
Thank you. I just, I agree as far as, we're a body and we do need to be able to defend each other. The problem is that, you know, we've never really been good with communication. I had no idea that this committee was even in existence. So somewhere, the lines of communication are not, they're broken down. So it's hard for me. I'm hearing from restaurant owners about this supposed review committee that existed. I didn't hear it from us. And I stay on top of, you know, everything. I keep in touch with Fatima. I'm at meetings. And I didn't know anything about it. So I just think that we also need to do a better job of communicating with one another. I do think, however, that Counselor Avellaneda just mentioned that there's still the existence of this committee. I think that once we've allocated the funding to a third party, I don't think there's anything that we need to be doing with anything. I believe that that impedes with the day-to-day. We hear that constantly. Every time Councilor Cooper puts in an order that he's interfering with the day-to-day operations, I think that us interfering with a contract that's already set out to a third party, that we're kind of treading on some murky waters. And I personally feel uncomfortable with that because ultimately, whether it's one, two, or a committee of three, you still represent 11 of us as a body.
Yes, in response to that, I think that we have an obligation to know in regards to the money, who's actually getting the money. I think that's part of our oversight to be able to see that who got the money and was a fair across the board to everybody. I think it just doesn't end once we give the money. And I don't think we're interfering with the day-to-day operation because we're not actually sitting on a committee that's meeting every day. But we will get reports every now and then how things are going. I think that's the bottom line and the emphasis here.
I would like to get the opinion of the city solicitor. Is she there?
No.
I just want to make sure that what we're doing falls within, you know, our purview. I don't believe in us overreaching. I think that if we have to babysit the people we're giving contracts to, then maybe we shouldn't be giving contracts to them. I think that this is how you build community. And so I would love, I don't know if we could put in a motion to get the opinion of the city solicitor as to what is legal. I just want to make sure that we're operating from a place of integrity and transparency because this is too critical. People are really scared right now and these small businesses are applying for funding in good faith. And I want to make sure that we're operating with that same level of integrity.
Yeah, you can put in an order to request the city solicitor to give you an opinion.
Can we amend this communication to include asking the city solicitor for her opinion?
Yeah, we can amend it to ask the city solicitor to give us an opinion.
All right. Thank you, Counselor.
Chair recognizes Judith Garcia, Councilor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I honestly was not going to speak on the matter because I already, a few weeks ago, I actually presented a public statement on how I felt about the situation. But I will say this. I will say that we should shift our focus and, and let me backtrack. Not necessarily say shift the focus on the importance of really asking for transparency. I think that's key. And I appreciate Joanna Mejia, who is an owner of Cazacho's Restaurant and has been an exemplary person in the downtown area. But what I do want to say is that I was honored to be selected in this special committee. But I also would appreciate if my integrity was not put in question in terms of my work and dedication to this committee. I was selected and I wish to believe that the council president selected me to be a part of this committee because of my relationship that I've built with the business owners in downtown Broadway. It's no secret that I am the councillor for District Five, which I like to say is the heart of Chelsea. It's where downtown is. And I've had wonderful communications with the businesses owners there. And there's been plenty of legislation that's been introduced. Not only this, but also I have been, I've been an advocate of having a special grant to help businesses with sanitation, with sanitation products. But also, I was the one who introduced the renewal, the reduction of the renewal for the liquor licenses that is, that will be of tremendous help to many of our businesses. And that didn't stem out of nowhere. That stemmed from my constant communication with the businesses. And it's been through those meetings that I had during this pandemic with 30 businesses, including Joanna, including many of the folks that signed this letter. I've sat with many of you in downtown to listen to some of your concerns. And I became an advocate for that during the special committee. So when I was in those calls with Alex Train, with Carl Allen, with Naomi Zabid, with Anthony, who I was able to leverage as part of the Civitas Fellowship Program through the Harvard School, I communicated every need that all of these business owners had requested, which were finding a vendor of one person they can go to to complete the application, ask any questions. That person is Daisy Paraguay and that person is Carlos Matos. So that was one of the things they wanted. They wanted a simple application. That was something that I also advocated for. They also wanted to get rid of the residency requirement from some of the businesses. That's something that we also got rid of because I was a part of this committee and I've served as a voice for all those needs that were requested by many of these businesses. So by claiming that we weren't functioning with integrity, it's a bit insulting to me because I tried my best to really advocate for everything that all these businesses were requesting in terms of making it an effective application. So I really, really encourage everyone to, you know, check in, pick up the phone and call us and don't be a part of spreading gossip that has nothing to do. I wasn't a part of selecting any of these applications. I didn't even look at the applications. I was a part of helping execute a program that really reflected the needs of business owners. That's all I was here for. I was also one of the city councilors who really pushed to ensure that we have $1 million to distribute as opposed to having less. So that's all I want to say about it. I hope that all of this doesn't shift focus from the wonderful commitment as a city council that we had to help our small businesses. As a city government, it's not our duty to be giving funds to small businesses, but we're doing it because we love you all and because we know that you are integral to our economy and our community. And I'm so proud to continue vouching for all of you. So I really hope that this gossip spreads. Honestly, I had a horrible experience about a week ago where I went to a restaurant and the business owner approached me telling me that she was informed that we are no longer giving these funds and that we're giving it within council members. And that's not true. That's simply not true. I devoted hours of service on these calls to ensure that we gave out a decent application. So I really hope everyone, I wish everyone good luck. I hope that the people that do get the award actually are able to make good use of it and really, you know, serve as a lifeline because I know that and I'm aware that this funding can serve as a lifeline to many of these businesses. So that being said, I honestly hope that, you know, businesses no longer get involved with gossip that is simply not true. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cooperrow.
I was contacted by citizens about this and about this committee. I know that we gave money to these businesses because that was the right thing to do, to help them. But I didn't even know a committee existed. And for one, they always told me the daily operation interfering with this. When that was done, there shouldn't have been nobody from the City Council be there or all of us be there. One, the committee shouldn't have said, "Who gets the money?" The money should have went, been done from downstairs, just like they do with everything else. We cannot, as they say to me, put ourselves in committees where we dictate to the city manager what should be done. They say to me, "That's interfering with the daily operation." So when you do a committee and the rest of your city council don't even know it exists, what is that? I didn't know it existed. People had told me. They had sent me a letter telling me this is what's going on and I didn't know. And why is some particular city councils involved in a committee to disperse money? We're not supposed to disperse money. That's the purpose of the city manager. The only thing we do is allocate the money after it's brought to us. We don't say who gets the money. They send it to us and then we have to approve the money. We can't have committees to say, "You're going to get money, you're going to get money, and you're going to get money." We don't do that. And I don't understand why such a committee was done in the first place when they always say to me, "Oh, you're interfering with the daily operation." So isn't that interfering with the daily operation? If that's not interfering with the daily operation, I don't know what is.
Counselor, for the record, it's not interfering with the daily operation. Okay, it was a committee that the president has the right to set up. If you read Rule 16 to Rule Six in our audits, you could see that he has the right to do that, which he did. And we're not making decision on who gets the money, all right, for clarification. All right, for clarification, this body is not saying who is getting the money.
That's what the people thought was happening.
Well, we're here to clean that up.
That's what the people said was happening. This body was determining who was going to get the money.
Right, so part, part of the conversation is sometime we have to pick up the phone and ask questions. All right, I appreciate your concern. Counselor, Counselor Taylor.
So it seems to me that this was a lot of drama about nothing. And it seems to me that this council has already enough unnecessary drama going on. The committee was not telling anybody who, who was going to get money. Okay, that was not their function. They never did it. They were never supposed to do it and they never did. So I would, I mean, in, in all, in all, with all due respect, all the people that signed this letter, I would say that whoever told you that that was the, that that was the case, that this was some secret cabal that was going to decide, I would go back to that person who told you this.
You can't address us, young lady.
So, so I, I, I'm just.
Young lady. Thank you.
So, so I would just say, and like I've said before in the past, for people that have, have been told that I've said things that I have never said or done things that...
God.
Pardon me? Excuse me?
Counselor, keep your remarks to yourself, you're alive.
So, you know, I would say, pick up the telephone, call people, find out what's going on. Don't take one person's word for it because, you know, there are people in this community that like to stir the pot and that like to, like to make drama where, where none exists or none should exist. You know, people talk about building a community. I believe that too. I think that we should. And for the record, if you all remember, I was the one who originally brought this thing up, that the business community was gonna need help. And I knew it because I'm a business owner and I know how hard people, especially in hospitality, and that, that a good significant part of that money was to be reserved for the hospitality industry. So with all due respect, I think that, you know, people should, if, if they're being told one thing, you know, it's like the old, the old Ronald Reagan adage, trust but, but verify. So if you, if you hear something, okay, you can listen to that. Just pick up the phone and call and try to, you know, verify what's being said to you because sometimes you might not get the same. So that's, that's all I'm really trying to say. You know, we, we should, in trying to build a community, you know, we gotta, we gotta start working more together and stop, you know, trying to, trying to fight with each other so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lopez.
My concern here is that if this committee was made, how come some of our counselors, some of us didn't know about it? There's 11 of us and every, every one of us has a power, same power that, that anybody has here. So no one is better than anybody and we should know when some of these committees are, are made. And I didn't know that this committee exists. Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other counsel on the matter who didn't speak? I'll recognize you briefly.
Sorry, just one more thing. Is it, I was fully aware of, of this committee. Maybe, maybe it's because I was on the, on the previous committee, but, but I was fully aware that Counselor Zabith and Counselor Garcia were going to work with those guys to try to come up with how the program was going to work. And that was it. And it had nothing to do with evaluating individual applications. So, you know, I, I just don't know where that, and, and for several counselors who, who didn't know, I knew. So I, 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 I'm not quite sure if you weren't in those, weren't in those meetings.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm not, I'm not, if we already spoke on a matter, I'm not going to let you speak on a matter.
You just recognized Todd Taylor for a second time, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I did. And I'm not going to allow anybody else to speak. We're going to move on with you.
Well, the city manager told me that there was a review committee to review applications. So if we're going to be honest here, I'm going to be honest. I did my due diligence and I made a phone call when I found out about it, exactly like everyone's recommending. And the city manager said that he couldn't back down on his word because he'd already promised the chairman of this council that he would allow him to create a review committee to review the application. So if we're going to be honest, let's lay it all on the table and let's do it. But I, I'm not going to sit here and, and pretend for anyone because I was elected by the people of this community to serve them and to be transparent. And right now, what we're doing is a crap show.
Okay. Is that it? Actually, I just want to read. I want to, I want to read what the original order was. That a special subcommittee be created to discuss the report back and suggest to the city council as a whole on the Corona-19 economic stimulus package to assist Chelsea-based businesses to reopen after the state audit on essential businesses shutdown is lifted. City council appointed, appointed to the special subcommittee are Council President Roy Evergeneta, Vice President Judith Garcia, Counselor at Large Leo Robinson, District Counselor Todd Taylor, and District Counselor Calvin Brown. And this was done on May 4th, 2020. So I'd ask the clerk, the next order of business.
Next order of business, communications. Let me see, we have a communication received from the city clerk, Jeanette Centron White and regards actions approved on October 6th, 2020 Traffic and Parking Commission meeting. Pleasure to the body.
Can I get a motion from the body?
Accept and file, Todd Taylor.
Todd Taylor, accept and file a communication under suspension. Todd Taylor moves accept a communication under suspension if there's no objections.
Yeah, traffic and parking.
Traffic and parking.
We now have a committee for unfinished business. We have unfinished business, the zoning.
Right. Unfinished business.
We have under unfinished business, we have the, we had the public hearing tonight on the zoning proposal. We got the letter from the planning board and they approved it. And we have the order introduced by Counselor Evergeneta, ordered that Chapter 34, Article Two, Zoning District, Section 34 dash 29. Any accompanying zoning map be amended by changing the zoning district of the following parcels of Washington Street to repay, uh, to retail business two, B R two, 74 Washington Avenue, 80 Washington Avenue, 84 Washington Avenue, 86, 88, 90, and 92 Washington Avenue.
Chair recognizes Counselor Evergeneta.
Move to adopt a roll call vote.
Want to speak on the matter? You, you have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you. To those at home and to my colleagues, this is an amendment to the zoning ordinance to change the zoning for the, what are, is a small retail area of Washington Avenue between Hurd Street and Blossom. You might know these as there was a barber shop there, the church on the corner right now, is on bookend is Papoose's Zaccino and then like a convenience store and a laundromat there. Somewhere along the lines, it was put into an R two district. R two district does not allow retail business except by special permit. So the idea is to make sure that the zoning for the area basically adheres to what is existing or has been existing for decades so that anytime a business wants to open up in what are already retail locations, they don't have to go to the zoning board to get a special permit. It's just there as a allowed use, much like there is in downtown Broadway and other neighborhood retail areas such as Cary Square, the Central Ave, and Park Square. So it's just a, a, you know, why tie up the zoning board with these little applications that really make no sense? So again, this is simply to allow retail zone in what is already retail shops in the area between Blossom and Hurd. Thank you.
Counselor Cooperrow.
I agree with Counselor. That's a good thing. That area, well, this will do, it will increase that area and make it even a better area by changing the way it wants to become. That's across the street where the, the 7-Eleven used to be, right? Is that that, which one is it?
So on Hurd, it's from Hurd Street to Blossom.
Further down?
Right after the Washington Ave Bridge.
Oh, right there, yeah.
Chair, Chair recognizes.
Such a bad thing.
Chair recognizes Counselor Brown. Counselor Brown, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just want to thank the counselor for bringing this in. I spoke to him when he first brought it up. I wasn't for sure that it was even, had the existing, I thought it had the existing document there, but for the last 30 years, and I can attest for that because I lived on Hurd Street on the corner, and that same block that he's describing on the corner, Washington, Hurd, and moved over to Blossom, it's the same commercial stores and businesses that's been there. And for the life of me, I did not know that every time someone went out that they had to do a special permit. I thought it was zone for that area and it makes sense just to make sure that it is zone for that area to keep that existing, that same face and that same type of atmosphere that they have there. The laundromat has been there for years and the, on the corner where the church is now, it's been changing over the years, but pretty much it started off as a, a vacuum shop, a convenience store, a little restaurant bar on the corner of Blossom in Washington. But for the best parts of it, and it's a part of the area that I represent, there's really been no problems there other than once in a while, we've had some nuisance incidents with the bar. But since then, they have been working to clean up their image there. And I did not know that it was not up to, it did not meet conformity of the, of the requirement in there for that commercial area. Thank you, Counselor.
Any, seeing, seeing no other speakers, the last row of roll call.
Yes, to adopt.
Yes, to adopt.
Counselor Zabith?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia? Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Cooperrow? Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Vido? Counselor Vega Maldonado? Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Evergeneta?
Yes.
And Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Three, six, eight, eight in favor. Motion adopted. We now move on to second readings. Under second readings, we have the communication with regards to appointments to boards and commissions.
What is the wish of the council?
Please, uh, votes that we have these appointments on a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Brown asked that we have a roll call on the appointments.
Appointments to boards and commissions.
On the boards and commissions. A yes vote would adopt the appointments by the city manager on various number of boards. I'm going to read them out real quick for reference and to remind everyone. Historical commission, Matthew Frank. Planning board, Khalil Siddique. Board of health, Ola Bayodi. Community schools advisory board, Christopher Maranquin. Affordable housing trust fund, Colleen Kelly. And that is it.
I think that's it, yeah.
A yes vote is an adoption of those appointments. Counselor Brown?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just want quickly, um, you know, want to speak on behalf of my friend Matt Frank. Um, as we know, Matt Frank is a former city counselor, former president of the city councilor. And Matt Frank, I mean, he personally called me and spoke to me about his interest in getting back involved in the city. We probably all know him from being around at the events, taking pictures and doing some stuff. I know as a member of the Cary House, he's been so actively involved in that. So when I saw that his interest was going back on his board to get his name and nomination to be, he should have put his board. I couldn't think of a better person to get involved that's already involved and have a passion for the city. I know there's a lot of other boards that he would, that he could have probably got involved in, but I was so grateful to be able to just say thank you for coming back, working on his board. And the House Cary House, obviously they do a lot of great stuff. Going to miss the holiday cooking and dinners that they normally have up there, but due to the COVID-19, the social distance, I'm sure they won't have it. But it'd be nice to have Matt back on to be actively involved in the city and it gives him something to do. He really has showed an interest. He reached out to me and said that, you know, please consider him. So I want to thank him for reaching out and that's why I'm speaking on it right now. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no further comment, the clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Zabith?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia? Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Cooperrow? Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado? Absent. Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Evergeneta?
Yes.
And Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Man in favor, two absent.
The appointments pass. Next order under new business.
New business. First order under new business, order introduced by Counselor Zabith, request for a meeting with the city manager and parking clerk to discuss parking enforcement contract and details regarding enforcement and coverage.
Chair recognizes Counselor Zabith.
I ask that this order be adopted unanimously under suspension.
Seeing no objection, would you like to speak on it?
Just with all of the changes being done on Broadway and, or all around the city, I think that it's important that we look at what's going to be done as far as double parking and other issues that will arise because of spaces that might be taken away and how that's going to be enforced and to take a look just in general around the city, how the parking is being enforced and whether or not we're getting as much coverage as we need on a daily basis as far as addressing when cars are parked during street cleaning and if cars are parked overnight and they don't have a resident sticker.
So is this, and just to, just to clarify, you're asking for a meeting of the subcommittee on conference to discuss this?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, any other speakers on this item? None. The next order, request that the city manager contact federal realty to provide regular maintenance of the entire length of Mill Creek River Walk and adjacent parcels within Chelsea Commons commercial area. Two, reinforce the restriction of trucks not per, not permitted to utilize Stockton Street to assess the shopping center, but rather redirecting them from Revia Beach Parkway as set forth in the original agreement with the city of Chelsea. City manager shall request monthly updates from federal realty on the ongoing status of these actions. Counselor Zabith, what is the wish?
I ask that it be adopted under suspension. May I speak on it?
Seeing no objections, you can speak on it.
So the, the whole area that is around the, it's Mill Creek, it's the, the Chelsea Creek, the entire walk that is by the Home Depot development and all the residences that are down there, the entire, that entire area is a beautiful marshy area that is underutilized right now by a lot of people who live in the neighborhood because it has fallen into particular disarray, especially during these times because we have, unfortunately, we have an overabundance of people who need places to stay during the day and sometimes at night as well. And so there's been a lot of refuse that's been left there because of people who are just spending a lot of time and depositing whatever they're using to live with at the moment. And it's been very challenging for DPW to keep up with trying to clean up the area. And so I'm, I want for it to be looked into what was discussed in the original... And so I'm, I want for it to be looked into what was discussed in the original agreement with federal realty, which is that they would clean up periodically, maintain that whole area, and just make a point of holding them accountable to what had been agreed upon in the original contract.
Counsel Recupero.
I agree with counselor. I would normally walk around that area, and behind Home Depot is always full of all kinds of stuff. And I thought the city maintained that, but since counselor said that this company maintains it, they should do a better job. They should go and check it all the time because I go there, and it's disgusting. They've got bags, they've got everything thrown over to the sides, and it's a good thing they should put in for this so that area could be a good place for people to walk.
Any other counselors? Seeing none, we move on to the next order.
Next order introduced by Counsel Recupero, request for the city solicitor to provide the city council with a written explanation with what constitutes is interfering with the daily operations of the city manager.
Counsel Recupero?
I'd like to adopt under suspension. There's no objection, I'd like to speak about it.
Seeing no objection, you have the floor.
Normally, with the, to the years that I've been here, I always said, they always said, daily operation. I've yet to understand exactly what daily operation means. I always was under the impression that, believing that daily operation meant when you went to the city manager and say, I want you to do such a thing. I was always under the impression, we cannot tell that to the city manager what to do. I know that we cannot tell him. The only thing we can do is request something to be done, and it's up to him to determine if he wants to do it, yes or no. But yet, anytime you put something, it's always with the daily operation. So now, I wanted in writing, exactly in writing, for all the counselors to understand especially what it is for us to say, what we can say and what we can't say. So that's not very much to ask, since they're always saying that, show me in writing. That way, I could never say something that I don't know. If I don't know it and I'm interfering, I won't even bother putting it in. What's the point of doing something if you're interfering? But at least I would like to know what constitutes that, interfering with the daily operations law. In other words, tell me what my job is. What is my job? What is the job of a city counselor? That's what I want you to explain to me. What is my job? Thank you.
Next order, request that the city manager put a dumpster within the Chelsea City Yard for disposal of everyday trash that the trash man won't collect. Counsel Recupero.
I'd like to adopt under suspension. There's no objection, I'll talk about it.
Seeing no objection, you have the floor.
Our city has a big trash problem. Lately, I can have pictures show you on my phone that they're throwing trash inside of these big bins. People are getting rid of trash, and from what I understand now, I don't know if it's true, but I would like to know if it's true, that you can only throw mattresses out once a month. I don't know, that's what they're saying, that you can throw mattresses once a month. So there's mattresses ending up all over the place. There was one in front of City Hall for a long time, right across the street. And there's many other things. The people are dumping the trash all over the place wherever they can find it. Yes, I understand, it's not the city business to collect trash per se, but it is. If we don't have a place for these people, or homeowners or anybody that wants to throw trash, they have to be Chelsea residents and show a Chelsea license for them to go there. If we don't have them where they do it, they're going to throw it on the ground. And then who's going to pay for it? The city itself. The city has to hire people to go get it, pick it up, put it in the truck, and still dump it. So, it's a win-win situation to have some place where these people can dump some of the stuff. Some is better than having it all thrown in the street. Regardless, the city's still going to pay. Isn't it better to have a clean city than a dump ground? This was a dump ground before, and it still is sort of, in my neighborhood, they still dump all over the place. I find that all the time, and I call DPW to pick it up. So, if there's a way that we can have a dumpster, even a small dumpster, whatever it is where people can say, you live in Chelsea, show me your ID that you live here, and you can throw garbage. What, the garbage that the garbage man don't pick up, that's the garbage you want to throw. The one that the garbage man pick up, there's no need for you to throw it. You can throw it in the garbage. But the one that the garbage man don't pick up, why not? Instead of throwing it on the street, throw it in the city yard.
Any other questions? Comments? None. Next order.
Next order introduced by Counsel Robinson, request for a subcommittee on conference with Pine Street Inn, wind group, the neighborhood developers, Veterans Service Director Francisco Toro, to discuss concerns from veterans group at Eight Grove Street.
Chair recognizes Counsel Robinson.
I'm requesting this because there's been a lot of issues happening at Eight Grove Street, and I think it's time that we address what's going on over there at the building, who is responsible. One of my concerns is, it started out as veterans housing, and it's a question of whether it's a group home now or if it's veterans housing. So therefore, trying to get to the bottom of what it is and address some of the issues and concerns that some of the veterans have over there. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I don't agree, so it can't be unanimous. So what do we do? Push it to a roll call?
You can object, you can object to under suspension and ask for a roll call vote.
Okay, so I object to the suspension and I'll ask for a roll call, and I'd like to speak on it briefly, please.
Counsel Vido, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, there seems to be some very unclear lines as to what is appropriate and what is interfering with day-to-day, and what this, to me, seems like a total overreach into the private sector. I reached out to the folks that run the veterans group on Grove Street, and apparently there's been some issues there with racism. And one of the people that had filed the complaint has been working with the management company to work it out. It is also my understanding that there is a current, there's a file here at City Hall out of the city solicitor's office where they're processing it through the Human Rights Commission. I just don't know that this is necessarily our place to be. I think that they have, this group home is with wind management, it has TND, it has the Pine Street Inn, and I think that we need to allow people to be able to stand on their own two feet, and I don't know that we should be there. I know there was an email that Counselor, the introducing Counselor, had sent to us about him attempting to go to a meeting there and that there was a violation of HIPAA laws. So if that's the case, that's medical situations that's being, there are medical situations that are being discussed in this setting, and I for one certainly do not feel comfortable being a part of our conversation simply because I have the title of counselor. I think that we need to trust that these organizations are going to do their due diligence and do their job, and that we don't necessarily have to continue to overreach and step into places where we shouldn't be. I think, though Counsel Recupero's request about what's day-to-day and what's not seems a little funny to me, I do think that we really need to really think about this. I think COVID-19 makes things a little more complicated because we're virtual and we can't meet the way that we used to, but I think that we need to be, we need to, all eleven of us need to become a little bit more clearer as to what our roles as city counselors actually are.
So, I'm going to, through the chair, if allowed, ask the city manager, well, I was going to say, if the city manager can explain if there is a city relationship with the group home, and then if it's within, not as some may believe, a private entity, but has some sort of relationship or agreement with the city. City manager?
Yes, we do. We do.
So, there's no city, this is exclusively a private entity-run organization. However, in their special permit, they did commit to certain conditions, one of which was a level of outside oversight of the people who were living there in terms of onsite management and that sort of thing. As far as I can tell, they're in compliance with that special permit condition, based on conversations and some written documentation that's come back and forth to the city when it raised some inquiries, given that there were concerns raised that the level of oversight wasn't where it had been required to be by virtue of the special permit. But beyond that special permit conditions, and we have special conditions with lots of private locations that have granted special permits, there's no city relationship between, there's no government relationship between City Hall and that facility. It is a privately-run facility.
Okay. Counsel Recupero.
Counsel Vido, and what the city manager says, I'd like to lay this on the table.
Counsel Recupero's asked for a lay on the table. If there's any objection, we can ask for a roll call vote. Is there any? Okay, so there's a roll call, there's a roll call vote on the lay on the table. There is no discussion on it. Recupero's asking that this matter lay on the table. A yes vote would be to support it being laid on the table, and no vote would be to reject it, and we will continue discussion.
Counsel Zabit?
Yes.
Counsel Garcia, she's absent. Counsel Taylor?
No.
Counsel Recupero?
What is that? Yes means to put it on the table? Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
No.
Counsel Brown?
No.
Counsel Vido?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado? Absent. Counsel Rodriguez?
No.
Counsel Avellaneda?
No.
And Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Four in favor, one, two, three, four. Five opposed, the motion is defeated.
The motion to lay on the tables did not pass. We will continue discussion. Counsel Brown, you raised your hand previously.
Thank you. I just got a few questions. Hopefully, we can get this into a subcommittee and we can really address this issue. One thing is, I just, if we invested and the owners coming in here with the knowledge that this was going to be a veterans facility, and if we have issues or concerns of racism and folks are, that's our, that's our business. If we have a place that lies within this city and we have issues of racism going on, I can't believe that a counselor is saying this is not a place for us to be. This is safety, this is protection, and this is harmful to our Chelsea residents, whether they're veterans or just adult residents living in this place. If there's these kind of incidents going on, yes, we should be involved. Yes, we should be finding out what's going on there and define what was actually supposed to be, this place was supposed to be. I don't know too much about it. It's fairly run, as the city manager said, by a professional outside entity, but if there is an issue that our veterans are being, living there, and our veterans are being harassed, and issue of racism is coming amongst our residents there, whether they're veterans or residents, then we should definitely be aware of it and look into it. And it doesn't, it's not a lot to have a meeting to find out, you know, what some of the acquisitions that's going on up here. It's our job to be aware of what's going on. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counsel Lopez.
Yes, I just want to comment on this. As the city manager said, this is running by a nonprofit organization, and they've got a company who managed the building. So I think this business should be fixed between them, among them. And, yeah, I don't think the city should be having any business there, going on private stuff. Thank you. I know we can help to communicate with them. If they have any problems, we can help, but we shouldn't be in the middle of this. They got neighborhood developers, and it's wind management, so they should fix that problem.
Mr. Chairman?
Counsel Vido.
Thank you. I just want to say that, just to reemphasize what I said, I really don't know what the situation is over there, but I do know that we're talking about a very vulnerable population. And I know that a lot of the folks that are there are folks that have dealt with homelessness previously, are, there's a lot of trauma there, there are a lot of things there that honestly is way above our pay grade. And I just would like for us to trust, I think that there's a way of supporting without us getting involved in their operations and allowing them to fix this themselves. When my colleague tried to go there for a meeting, they turned him away citing a violation of HIPAA laws. That is your privacy in terms of your, of your, of your medical, of your medical records not being public and being able to protect a patient's privacy. So I really think that we're walking a really fine line, and I just want to caution folks. I'm not attached or married to this either, which way, I'm not vested in this anyway. I would support maybe the potential of building a relationship with our veterans coordinator, Francisco Toro, and him building a relationship with them to serve as a liaison. But as far as us as city counselors being involved in something dead smack in the middle that is so, so vulnerable and so tender as homeless veterans and trauma and only God knows what else, I just don't think it's the place for us. And I just wanted to caution the city council one last time with respect to that. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson.
For Cooperrow and I worked on this issue to make sure that it was going to be a veterans' home and that Chelsea veterans are going to have a priority. There was a special permit that was granted to them, and part of that special permit they're not living up to. They're supposed to have somebody in the building from seven o'clock at night to three o'clock in the morning. There is no evidence that that has been happening. And in regards to the HIPAA law, the meeting that I was at, they asked me to leave, they were not talking about anybody's medical condition or history, for the record. Again, they weren't talking about anybody's medical history. And if you want to verify anything, you can reach out to the Veterans Service veteran, Francisco Toro, who was at the meeting, and he can verify everything I'm saying here tonight. So therefore, we do have a responsibility because there's a special permit that they have over there, and we have oversight on it. Thank you, Counsel.
Counsel Robinson, do you mind taking the suggestion that this be sent to committee on housing and development versus a conference, or do you prefer to keep it with a conference?
It can go to housing and development or whatever. Yeah, because it would be, because I'd invite Alex and him to the meeting so I can discuss the special permit.
I'll thumb over to a roll call vote, just for transparency.
No, there is a, there is a vote call vote, but the suggestion is that it's not going to committee on conference, but rather committee on housing and community development.
Okay, thank you.
A yes vote will send us to the conference on community, the subcommittee on community housing and development, and no vote would end the whole discussion and nothing would happen.
Counsel Zabit?
Yes.
Counsel Garcia, absent. Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
I guess so, yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Absent.
Counsel Vido?
No.
Counsel Vega Maldonado? Absent. Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Avellaneda?
Yes.
And Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Three, six, seven in favor, one, no, and three, absent. Motion is adopted.
Next order is a request for a record of all public infrastructure city projects, permitted projects submitted to the city council, along with a start date and end date, potential delays and updates. Counsel Rodriguez?
I'm unanimous under suspension. If there's no objection, I'll quickly speak on it.
Seeing no objection, you have the floor.
So the purpose of this is, I know, especially with the pandemic, a lot of delays happen with a bunch of projects. So I thought it would be easier if we had a list of all projects of when they started and the potential end date is. So like when residents reach out to us, we have a clear answer, and we don't really have to keep going back and forth with Fidel or anybody else with that information, and it'll just help us know, give an idea of, you know, all the projects we have going on, because I know some are forgotten, and I think it would be like a good update for us.
Next order.
Next order by Counsel Rodriguez, request for a subcommittee on conference be held to evaluate the success and structure of the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs.
Chair recognizes Counsel Rodriguez.
I'm unanimous under suspension, no objections, and quickly speak on it.
Seeing no objection, you have the floor. Seeing no objection, you have the floor.
So the purpose of this, I think it'd been a while since we met with the Recreation Department, and I just want to see what's going on with them, what's working, what's not working. We could talk about the scholarship program that they have, you know, look into their financials, see if we need to invest more, just to, pretty much just go over the whole program to see, you know, for, for improvement and growth.
Next order introduced by Counsel Avila Nada, audit that pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44 of 4A, the Chelsea City Council approves the City of Chelsea entering into an agreement for the Nudge Suffolk Resilience Sustainability Office with the municipalities of Revere and Winter.
Counsel Taylor. Next order.
Next order introduced by Counsel Robinson, audit that an increase to the fiscal year 2021 School Department original appropriation from $96,513,407 to $100,310,436 for net increase of $3,797,029 attributed to an increase of fiscal year 2021, Chapter 78.
Chair recognizes Counsel Robinson.
Suspension, if there are no objections.
Ain't none.
Point of inquiry.
Yes, Counsel Vito.
Thank you. I'm sorry, it's just I'm virtual, and so I'm a little delayed over here. But the previous order that Counselor Taylor moved to a second reading, did it require a second reading? I thought that was only for financial obligations.
It did not, but we chose to allow more time for people to read the whole packet and ask any questions if needed.
Okay, I didn't realize that that was, okay. Thank you.
We have an audit to dispatch, Counsel Robinson, audit in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of General Laws, a sum of $62,734.45 representing the unexpected portion of the $270,000 borrowed under the fiscal year 2017 CIP for water infrastructure improvements, Webster Ave Utility Project Water Bond Account, and which remains available after the completion of the project for which the loan was authorized and which is no longer needed to complete the project, is hereby transferred in the amount of $62,734.45 for water improvements to the FY 2019 SXP Project Account.
Counsel Robinson.
Move to a second reading, under suspension, if there are no objections.
Seeing none. Interesting that it's a water bong on Webster Ave where there's a marijuana retail.
Next order entered by Counsel Robinson, audit in accordance with the Chapter 44, Section 20 of General Laws, the sum of $146,024.15 representing the unexpected portion of the $264,000 borrowed under the fiscal year 2017 CIP for infrastructure improvements, Webster Ave Utility Project Sewer Bond Account, and which remains available at the completion of the project for which the loan was authorized and which is no longer needed to complete the project, is hereby transferred in the amount of $146,024.15 for water improvements to the FY 2019 SXP Project Account.
Counsel Robinson.
Move to a second reading, under suspension, if there are no objections.
And the next order introduced by Counsel Robinson, audit that Chelsea City Council authorized appropriation of $299,380.60 from the General Stabilization Account Fund, 7020 to the FY 2019 SXP Project Account Series.
Move to a second reading, under suspension, if there are no objections.
Seeing none. Are there any public announcements? Counsel Recupro.
Good evening, Chelsea resident. Here's my public announcement. You can still throw your mattress out as long as it is covered, because there's a paper going around telling people the City of Chelsea that they're only going to pick up mattresses once a month. That's not true. You can still throw your mattress. City manager, is it true that we can only throw mattresses once a month?
I never heard of that.
So you heard it from the city manager, you can still throw your mattresses away in your regular trash day, as long as you cover them up.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes, good evening. Yeah, I just want to remind people of Chelsea, that on a street cleaning day, please move your vehicles. I've been getting complaints from Grove Street, Marlborough Street, and different streets in the city, that when it's a street cleaning day, people don't move their cars, and our street needs to be cleaned. Please help a little bit. Move your car. I know you say, oh, maybe you, maybe you don't care to pay $25 for tickets, but the, the street doesn't get cleaned, so please move your vehicle. Please clean up. Please help. Move your vehicle. Thank you.
Counsel Vito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank Counselor Recupro for adding my name to the Hispanic Heritage Resolution. I really do appreciate. You know, I have a lot of respect for you. You have been a pillar in this community for a long time. So I just wanted to thank you for, for lifting me. Also, I want to remind my colleagues that there are, we are a body of 11, and while I'm not able to be there due to my compromised immune system and my health at the moment, that I am still here, very much alive. In fact, I am an at-large counselor. I topped the ticket in November, so I have a lot of people that I try to keep in touch with, and it's important for me to remain abreast of everything that's happening, whether it's review committees, whether it's a decision to allow someone an extra, constituents an extra week to hear an order. It just feels like the communication is just not flowing this way, and I don't know what else I can do because I do my due diligence. So I just want to remind folks that while I'm not there physically, I am still very much here. Lastly, I want to remind the public that we are still in the middle of a pandemic. In fact, our numbers are starting to go up. In the last couple of days, the numbers were five and eight and single digits, and just last night, it's 23 again. And so we have to do whatever we can. I drive through Chelsea, I see people without masks, I see the groups. We have to do whatever we can to save, to, to protect ourselves. And if not for ourselves, for our, for people like me, people that are, that are compromised and vulnerable. We have learned that COVID is not going to spare us, so we need to do our due diligence to make sure that we're taking care of not just ourselves, but of each other. Thank you.
Counsel Lopez. Oh, okay, sorry. Counselor Calvin Brown.
Thank you. I'm sorry I missed this one, but I just wanted to give a quick update. We had a public safety meeting. It was called because there was some concern about the increasing shootings that was happening around the city. We had the city manager, we had the police chief, and we had some residents on the, the virtual site while we were inside the conference room. It is frustrating that we continue to hear about these shootings. The police have, at this meeting, have given us their word that they are making arrests. They are working around the clock to try to solve these problems. Some of the frustration and some of the heartache is that when folks are involved in these shootings, they do not want to give information and help the police try to resolve these issues. We know a lot of, you know, a lot of things are going on with the pandemic. People tension, people, stress level is, is boiling over, and you just, we just don't want you to take it out on our community. We just don't want you to have that anger that you have to have a gun and go around and shoot. So we're so grateful that our police came and our city manager talked about even some of the mental issues that some of the folks have because of the pandemic. Again.
Must be so.
Excuse me. They don't have an opportunity to go to some of the places where they were, routinely go and get some treatment and get some help. So we've got to try to really be somewhat abrasive when we see these things and try to report things that we see, and also try to, really try to not have a gun. There's too many guns in our community. Our city is not the only city that's having a rise in, in shootings, and it's very frustrating. But I, I, you know, the locations of where these shootings are taking place are just something that we have to be careful about. We've got kids have been involved in some of these shootings where either they were in a car or they were just close by. And you shooters, please, put the guns down and, and, and take really a close look at what you're doing when you point a gun. You don't know who's in that car, you don't know who's in that house. A stray bullet has no eye, no vision, it just goes when the gun is pulled. And, you know, we continue to try to make our residents safe and feel safe here, but we just really need people to be aware and try to help the police as much as possible, and we want to try to address these things. It's a very difficult time for everyone. We know the COVID-19 is pushing people to the limits, but please, let's not kill each other. Let's love each other, and let's try to really stay away from the shootings and the violence. Thank you.
Counsel Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize for the poor connectivity here, but I do want to thank all of my colleagues for echoing what they said today. I agree with everything in terms of pandemic and terms of violence. But I also want to add that the Department of Public Works, along with our Planning Development Department, they've worked very hard to ensure that we have all the necessary equipment ready for the designated bus station for launch. So this is a great time in our community where we will be moving this bus, this, this lane to ensure that many of our residents who have to commute from, to work, the local equipment will be able to get to work if they need in a more efficient manner. So we want to make this possible, and I hope our residents will be enjoying this new traffic flow, which will be giving preference to the designated bus lane.
Counsel Brown, and then Counsel Robinson, sorry.
Thank you. Again, I just wanted, I'd be remiss if I forgot this. Fifteen days away from this day, we will now have a completion of the 2020 election, presidential election. So please, folks, 15 days away from here, you don't have to wait. You can vote early. Our City Hall here, Elections Division downstairs, is having early voting up until the 30th of this month. If you don't feel that you can come out and get in line and vote in person and early, you also have the opportunity to mail your ballot in. You can request a mail-in ballot to be mailed in. You should be doing that this week, but obviously, when you send in a request, it takes time for the city clerk's office to process that request and also mail that out and then for it to get back in. If you don't trust the mail system, if you don't want to put in a US Postal, there's a mail drop-off box right here outside beside the library box. You can come and drop your ballot in there. If you want to do it the old-fashioned way, you want to wait till it's raining or snowing on November 3rd, you can come out and vote at your traditional location, St. Rose Williams School Fire Department, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, your ballots will be counted. So whoever you decide to vote for, whoever you decide that you don't want to vote for, you can't do it if you don't participate. So please, participate in our voting process. Fifteen days away. Thank you.
Just to follow up, Counsel Brown, for those who want to vote early, the Monday through Friday, this Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, this Tuesday from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and Friday from 9:00 AM to 11:00. So basically, it's the normal working hours of City Hall minus one hour towards the end of the day to allow for the cutoff. We are also allowing voting this Saturday from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. So if you want to come to City Hall this Saturday, you can come and vote from 2:00 to 6:00. And also, this Sunday is our last Sunday, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Thank you. Counselor Robinson.
And just a quick reminder that also, this is fire prevention week a month, and I'd just like to salute the fire department for all they do. But also, it's on October 14th, in 1973, was the Great Chelsea Fire that took place in Chelsea, and 123 families were burnt out and a number of businesses that were lost. And actually, where the IRS building is, it took 18 blocks, and we've come a long way from, from that day. So fire safety is very important in our community, so heed to it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any moments of silence for anyone? Okay, that concludes this meeting. Thank you, everybody.